Regular board meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 boards order. May I have a roll call?
Figaroa.
Here.
Goodridge.
Yeah.
Hayde. Kovak. Lewis.
Here.
Bradzinski.
Here.
Ragoh.
Here.
We have a call. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, please read our Fenton mission, beliefs, advice, and way statements.
Yes. Our Fenton mission statement is to cultivate successful, passionate, and empower learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Belief statements: Successful, passionate, and power learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with the state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Carrie, do we have any comments?
No, we do not.
Next item is recognition. Sam.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight, we want to honor our very own girls' cross-country All-State Runner Northwestern Medicine Discovery Program, and of course, Happy Board Members' Day. So let's start with our cross-country runner, Jocelyn Wade. If you please come forward. Jocelyn, I thought you were going to run up here, and I'm just kidding. Congratulations. We're here to honor you tonight as one of the top runners in our area and the state. She took second place at regionals, advanced through our sectionals, and earned a spot in the state tournaments. You can see the picture of us celebrating her advances. During the November 4th state finals in Peoria, she took 16th place. Just for some context, if you're in the top 25, you're considered an All-State Runner. And we did some digging. We think you're the first female runner that's ever been considered an All-State Runner in our school history. And the best part, what year are you? Sophomore. Two more years, there we go. So this is just one of many that we're anticipating in the future. But we just want to appreciate all your efforts, the hard work you put in to get yourself to this point, and look forward to your future. Unfortunately, Coach Keckstad has been ill and hasn't been at school, but I believe we have Coach Garcia here. Great. Come on up, Coach Garcia. Round of applause.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Giselle. I'm the assistant coach for the girls' cross-country team here. So Coach K was sick, but I get the pleasure to say a couple of kind words about our girl, Jocelyn. It truly was an honor to coach Jocelyn this past season. She just did so incredibly well. She worked hard all throughout the summer, all throughout the season. You know, all, everything she did was in an effort for this incredible achievement she made, you know, All-State, her first time in school history. Aside from being an incredible runner, she is also a superb teammate to all the girls on the team. All, every single girl on the team, coaches included, we truly find her an inspiration. So we are truly so lucky to have her as a part of the program, and we're so excited for her future achievements to come.
Can I lower this? Okay. Thank you. Okay. I just wanted to thank all my coaches, all my teammates, my family members, and everyone who believed in me and stood by me as I ran this cross-country season. It was an amazing season, and just thank you very much.
Okay, if you don't mind just coming forward here, we're going to take a picture. And if there's anyone else who would like to take a picture, come on over.
Congratulations.
Next, we have our Northwestern Discovery Program. Ladies, if you please come forward. Okay, we'd like to honor here tonight Paulina Kudjuski, Giselle Garcia, Ademari Gomez, Leila Ortiz, Natalie Ramirez, and Maria Marie Hani. And we also have Angie Nelson here today, and Kristen Pogalke, the teachers in our education program, to help share some words here in a minute. But as a brief intro, we want to showcase these students who were accepted into the Northwestern Medicine Discovery Program. This is a competitive, application-based program where students are accepted and participate in a year-long discovery of various careers within healthcare. Once a month on Saturday, students will visit different medical settings throughout Illinois and have hands-on experiences in areas like oncology, proton therapy, wellness, rehabilitation, nursing, and other areas. For a little more information, we have our teachers come forward and share some more thoughts.
Good evening. Kristen Pogalke and I are the ones that are teaching our new class this semester or year, Introduction to Healthcare Occupations. And in that class, we get to explore different healthcare-related careers. Mrs. Papenigllo was fortunate enough to make the connection with us with Northwestern Medicine. And they came in in September, and it's pretty impressive because we had a three-day turnaround for them to apply for this discovery program. These ladies all had to have a 3.0 GPA. They had to get a letter of recommendation from a teacher, and they had to fill out two essay questions. So we are very excited for this opportunity for these young ladies, and we know that they are going to represent Fenton well. Congratulations.
Would any of you like to say a few words? Yeah, come on.
First, I want to say thank you to my parents because they have been my number-one supporters. They have always told me that I could reach the stars, and I've held on to that saying my whole life. Next, I want to thank Mr. Bader, not just for writing my recommendation letter, but for always being a helping hand, whether it's for helping me school-wise or just listening to me. Lastly, I want to thank God for allowing this opportunity to happen, for listening to my worries and my excitement. Thank you.
The two most influential people that affected my decision while not only writing my application but also accepting was my parents, and they really supported me while I was like writing my application. And even when I got my acceptance, my most, I feel my most supportive teacher was Mr. Laudermith, not only because he wrote my application or my recommendation, but also because he helped me along the way and he motivated me, and he really helped my love for science grow. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Marie Hani, and I'm very honored to be here. I thank you for your recognition. I greatly appreciate Fenton's support here today, and I'd like to thank my parents for always supporting me and letting me know that I can do anything that I set my mind to. I also wanted to give a special thank you to Ms. Nelson. She's like our school mom, and she's always advocating for everything that we want to set our minds to. So thank you to her. Again, I just want to say I'm very grateful for the discovery program and the opportunity. I can't wait to see where it takes me. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank my family for all their support and encouragement, as well as to Mrs. Toh, my counselor, for assisting me with my essay, and Ms. Bible for being very quick and writing my letter of rec. On behalf of all of us ladies, we would like to thank and recognize Mrs. Nelson, Mrs. Pogalke, and Mrs. Papenigllo for not only letting us know about the discovery program, but always looking for ways they can better the health occupations class and guide us as we discover our future careers in healthcare. So thank you.
Okay. Well, why don't we come up here since we have such a large crowd? And again, parents, if you want to be in the picture or take a picture, come on forward.
Let's fight over here. [laughter] [inaudible] 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 The next item, one more recognition. One more?
Once again, thank you. Up next is a recognition to our board members. First of all, Happy Board Members' Day. From all of us, we want to take a moment and wish our Board of Education a Happy Board Members' Day. We honor all of you for donating your time and commitment towards making Fenton School a welcoming, safe place for our students to achieve their dreams. You all wear many different hats. They are educational leaders, policymakers, contract negotiators, governance, committee chairs for our school, and board members of other organizations outside of Fenton like NatSec and the Bensonville Foundation. But you are also a homeowner, a business owner, a taxpayer, a neighbor, a friend, a community member, and Bison Nation's biggest fan. Your work and influence include the following Fenton initiatives: Equity, Response to the Pandemic, Facility Construction and Renovation, Safety and Wellness, Balanced Budget and Fiscal Responsibility, Governance and Policy, and so many other things. We want you to know that your efforts are absolutely appreciated, and you are making a big difference in the lives of our children. Thank you, Fenton Board of Education, one more time. Another round of applause, please.
Our next item is informational items. James?
Thank you. We got quite a few items here. First one is our 2023 Fenton Illinois State Report Card. Just please note quickly, just a couple of preheaders here. Number one, there is no ISBE data report during the pandemic school year, which is 2019 through 2020, so you will see that on the display. Also note, the pandemic and post-pandemic deeply affected our attendance, our learning, our SEL and mental health services. Also, the demographics during this time period has also shifted in some ways. Our EL numbers have grown. Our students need more services as well. And lastly, include data from our, we also included on this report, data from our sender schools. So first up here, Sam and Kate will assist me, and they'll jump in as needed to, as I go over the state report card. All of this is from our state report card and through ISBE. There are 24 slides, so feel free to ask questions as we move forward. We'll try to go through this as efficiently as possible. Mind you, real quick, again, we are commendable schools, and the way they calculate their numbers is through indexes, not percentages. Okay?
Does that mean only half the kids that enter as freshmen graduate?
Where is that at?
Is this graduation rate? Or am I reading that?
No, this is an index score, so it's not...
Right.
Oh, don't read that literally.
Right. It's just a number to compare, like, zero to 100, basically.
Oh, it's blended with the rest of that stuff?
Correct. Right. So here's one way to look at it, as Sam was indicating earlier, like, you could get for graduation rate, right? The index is 50 points, for example, or 50%. We earn 43%. Okay, so it's not 43% of... We'll go through this, and we'll get to that number. Okay, thank you.
That's much better.
So commendable. Let me go through this. Commendable. Overall, the summative designation, we call it a grade, is commendable. Overall performance to be commendable is you're not in the top 10%, so you're somewhere between, below that. There are also no targeted students groups performing at or below the all-students group of the lowest-performing 5%. So if we scored below, if we were within 0 and 5%, we will not be commendable. Okay? And also, to be commendable, your graduation rate must be higher than 67. We know ours is approximately 87, 88. Who are our targeted population? And targeted population is any population, student population that's over 10%. That's our low income. Our Caucasian students, our Latino students, English learners, students with disability, former English ELLs. Sam, did I miss anything you want to add there?
No.
Okay, we keep going. Also, with commendable, performance data is collected via state reporting. That's all through ISBE. The metrics is from 0 to 100. Each indicator is weighted according to calculation. Each school's all-student score is ranked and determined with a designation. So once again, this is how they weighted. Okay? So that's their metrics. Here's a better number here, and I'm going to let Sam jump in here to give him a voice here to go over this scores. There's eight indicators there. Sam, do you want to cover the rest?
Right. So like we said earlier, this is what we call an index score, so don't think it's necessarily percentages everywhere. So it just gives you an idea overall. And you could see here, they're just, they're equally weighted. We looked earlier that, like, for example, graduation rate is 50% of the overall score. The other rates, ELA proficiency, math proficiency, is a smaller percentage of this overall commendable rating. So let's go to the next slide, and I think that'll provide a little more. So each subcategory is broken down. The state basically has said, okay, let's start there. The overall index shows right where we're at. So exemplary, you could see for the top 10% of schools in the state. So we're not really quite there, but we're solidly in that range. The index score is 67. The targeted range is kind of way down on that other end. So we're, right, exactly right where James is pointing to, so we're kind of solid, tending actually closer to exemplary than we would be to targeted. This is overall. Now, the nice thing about what the state has said is we want to look at all different subgroups, because schools can be great, but you're only as good as all your different subgroups. So we wholeheartedly embrace that. So what we wanted to do tonight is show you where we're at in our, in our subgroups.
Our first one here is low income. Go ahead, Sam.
Yep. So low income, you could see we're at 65. Again, a nice range there compared to where you see throughout the state. To the right would be above us, to the left would be below us. For white students, you could see, again, we're trending toward the right side. And our Hispanic students, even, we have approximately, I think it's like 65% Hispanic, so this is our biggest group, and we are at the 62 area. So again, trending toward the exemplary. This is an area that we want to focus on. Our EL learners, of course, as you know, the population's growing. In fact, we're going to take a closer look at that and exactly what our sender schools are at, because that's probably where we're going to be very quickly. But of course, we have a lot of newcomers. We have students that, you know, come to us, and we look for them to grow. But clearly, you could see we're kind of trending toward the left side, not that we're targeted or anything like that, but this is probably the subgroup that we're taking the closest look at on what we can do with our EL programming moving forward. Students with disabilities, you could see at 44, so that's close to the middle. This one is former ELLs, and so you could see that they're scoring at a high rate compared to the rest of the state. This could be a variety, it could be a Polish student, it could be any sort of student that's exited out at some point.
This one right here, I'll take this over here. This is our metrics for our teachers. Part of the report card is also to tell us about our teachers here. I can't quite see it. Let me use my laptop here. As you could tell, not this enrollment, the student ratio, we're below the state average there. We're at 16 to 1. State average is 18 to 1. We have a very strong, robust teacher retention. Our teachers are also getting their professional development with their masters, and we're looking for ways to also improve attendance.
Can you go back one?
Sure. Go back. This one?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see it all.
Sure.
So teacher retention is, so the state average is 93 and we're 93.6?
Right. State average is 90, yep. We're at close to 94, and that's been consistent the last five years. That purple line there, I talked about during the school year 2019, 2020, ISBE did not put a data because of the pandemic. They did not collect data. Next up here is student demographics. Just quickly here, let me just get my file there. Enrollment. Our enrollment, our special ed students are with IEPs consistently hover over 12 to 13% of our population. This next column, row here are English learners. You can see the growth. Five years ago, six years ago, it was at 10%. We are at 22%. Expect those numbers to continue to moving forward. Our low-income numbers there as well, at 56. We really believe that should be higher. We're encouraging our parents to complete the Free and Reduced Lunch Form, and that's how we calculate those numbers in our homelessness. Sam, you want to take this one?
Yeah. So this is a nice little graph. It also shows a trend line. Now, let me explain. You have to look at the trend line from right to left. It's a little counterintuitive. Normally, you think a trend going left to right, so if you could keep that in mind if you're looking at that. So right now, the EL exit rate, you could see, is low, kind of below the state average, and that's, like I said, that's an area that we're looking for growth in moving forward. The state average is also going down also. ELA proficiency, we feel good about this in that our score actually went up from 21-22. Still down from pre-pandemic, but we all know the effect the pandemic had, and it hit us pretty hard there, and especially 21-22 is when we felt that. So we're on our way back up, which we're happy about. We're also pleased to highlight that we're also on our way back up in math proficiency, even though the state average, we're not quite at the state average, but you could see the state average went down in math year over year. And then, science proficiency, actually, we did quite well in. Could see at 52%, which is actually just above the state average. One explanation for that is the science proficiency is in Spanish. So if you think about it, our EL learners could probably do better on that than they do on the SAT. Again, an interesting trend line here for grade nine on track. We actually look similar to state average, although we took a little bit of a dip last year with the interventions that we've put in, particularly in math. With academic lit, we think that that is going to go back up. That's what we're predicting, that that's just a temporary, down a little bit from where we were the year before. You could see 2021, we were down even further. Then we had the four-year graduation rate. This is another area of growth for us. We don't like that we're below 90% where we have been at historically, but a way to look at this is this particular group, 22-23 as freshmen. If you look at the COVID years, that was in the spring when the schools closed down. Then sophomore year, we pretty much were remote or a little bit of hybrid. And then their junior years were masked and senior, you know, and then senior year was when, was last year. So we kind of had a lot to overcome, and in some cases, kids were behind. The good news here, though, is that the five-year graduation rate's actually 93%. So you know kind of the way society is now. Maybe for a few kids, it took a year longer, but at least they persevered and were able to graduate. And then you can also look at the six-year graduation rate. Attendance is another area we continue to strive to improve. A small increase last year over 21-22, but again, down from post-pandemic percentages. This is kind of a county-wide issue. Talking to other principals, it's a challenge right now getting kids here consistently. Fortunately, we anticipated that this year with many of our attendance interventions, make... making sure students are held accountable going to class every day when they're here. And also, we're having more and more parent meetings where we're bringing them in, trying to problem solve what the issues might be, why the student may not be in school consistently. So, and we're also doing more home visits. We find that to be an effective way to try to connect with families. It's a myriad of reasons why a student, as you move on to the next category, chronic absenteeism. Again, that's higher than the state average and that's something that we certainly need to work on. That metric is explained there, if it's greater than 10% of school days. So if you figure 100, a real simple math, 180 days, that's 18 days or more. This is excused or unexcused. Not to make excuses, no pun intended, a little bit of humor in this presentation, but the, it can be someone with a medical issue. So if someone's out for 20 days due to a medical issue, they're considered chronic absentee.
So this doesn't account for COVID and requirements?
Well, it's a good, it's a good point. So back in the COVID years, if you're out 10 days, let's say, because you had COVID, I mean, you're getting real close to being a chronic absentee.
Right.
And you could be a high-performance student but had COVID.
Right, a couple times or, yeah, exactly. So, but, but, you know, obviously that's pretty high. We want our kids to be here, but that's part of the story with that category. The other category is chronic truancy. So what that means is you've missed more than 5% of the school days within the school year. So Bruce, help me with the math, 180 days, that's nine days, right?
Bruce?
Okay, so, so with those kids, the problem here is they, we may not know why they weren't here, even though we try to reach out. So again, that's a pretty high category, but typically these are families that one of two things has happened, either the student is not coming to school consistently and the parents don't know what to do, or perhaps could be a newcomer and doesn't, and maybe education may not be the priority. It may be employment or watching siblings or things like that. So again, yeah, we got to dive in a little bit more on, on why some kids are in this category, not really communicating particularly well with the schools.
Tell me out, what's the difference, absent and true?
Yeah, chronic truancy, that this category of the state basically means we don't necessarily have a reason. Because sometimes a parent will call in and say, Stevie's not feeling well or that. So that goes down as at least a reason. This is, you know, we get the attendance information goes out and we don't get any response on that particular absence. So we code it a certain way, basically. Mobility rate, you could see we're right about the state average. Those are students coming in and out. We actually had more freshmen come in this year for some reason than transferred out, but sometimes those things happen. More movement actually in 21, 22. So stability's good, so hopefully there isn't, that number doesn't get too high. And the dropout rate is slightly above the state average, but about where we were at in 21, 22. So again, what can we do to find out what's going on with a small percentage of our kids? That, that is also a little bit misleading because that could be someone that moved but didn't enroll anywhere else and that's considered our dropout because they're part of our cohort.
And another piece of that too, Sam and board, is that if you decide to get your GED, you're also going to fall in that category as a dropout.
Yeah, great point. And that's already happened a couple of times this year where that's probably the smartest route for the students. They can get the GED to James's point, but still a dropout. So there's, there's more to read between the lines with that one.
Is that the same for students who finish a semester early?
No.
No, they're considered graduate.
They're considered graduate. One thing is, as we dug into the data in regards to our dropout students, many of our students that decided not to continue school are from Central and South America and the responsibility and possibly life goal at this moment is not necessarily education, but it's to earn a job and earn money for their families. So that's a reality here as well in at Fenton. Before we go into, go ahead, Reid.
Well, you might have gone to the question that I had because to be, to be fair to the staff over the period of years, and those state numbers also include the COVID years and so on in terms of their averages. My question, although it's somewhat, for the moment, a somewhat subjective question, you know, what's the quality of the student that you're getting in today versus what you had four or five years ago? In other words, what do you have to work with?
I think, well, I think we've seen, Dan, and I'll give Kate a chance here because she's very passionate and has, we discussed this, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. The pandemic has changed education in many different ways. It has changed learning. You've probably heard of some of the social service that needs services, attendance as well. So we know our students are experiencing learning loss, sometimes trauma as well. And the students that have moved to our district, pre-pandemic as well as post-pandemic, have, have larger needs, if you want to say, to that and needs for their services as well as the immigrants coming in might have disrupted education where they go to school for two years, take two years off, then go back to school for another two years and so forth. So the need of, need of our students have increased this last couple of years. Kate, you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, I think James said it perfectly. I think, you know, dealing with the pandemic for all of our students was really difficult, but two of the indicators that we can see, which, which doesn't always point to it, but we've seen an increase in our low-income students and an increase in our EL students. And those students tend to need more resources. So I think you hit it nail, you know, nail on the head that even after the pandemic, while we're getting back, we're trying to get back to where we were, our population has changed.
You just, yes.
That's exactly right.
Okay. I would say this is the halfway point of the presentation. This one, we brought in data from our feeder schools. That's Bensonville Blackhawk Middle School as well as Wooddale Middle School. Sam, you want to continue and Kate jump in if you want to?
Sure, and I'm not going to take the time to go through these same percentages that you already saw. Does that make sense? Because we already talked about those. But you can see a comparison to Blackhawk, which is BH, and Wooddale, which is WD. And you could see enrollment, you can see percent IEP, percent EL. And I am going to highlight that one because as we said, you could see 37% in Blackhawk and 30% in Wooddale. So we anticipate being close to 30%, if not already there, quite honestly.
And Sam, we could say that as well as low income, that is coming our way as well.
Exactly, so. Attendance rate now, of course, attendance is a little bit different in middle school. You would hope there would be a little bit more accountability, but, you know, so we are below, but that chronic absenteeism is probably higher than Blackhawk and Wooddale would like to see as well as their, their chronic truancy. Although Wooddale's pretty low there. The mobility rate, pretty similar. These are different assessments and if you'd like more information on the eighth grade assessments, you probably want to ask Kate. But you can, you can see there is a breakdown. It shows grade eight and then a dash and then all students. So you could see our percentage, but it's, it's the IAR, it's not the SAT. And then math proficiency there also. EL exit rate, ours is low, but obviously you could see Blackhawk and Wooddale's also low. So this is perhaps something that we need, and we've already started articulation on see what we can do. Science proficiency.
All right, so let's take a pause there. Questions from the Board of Education as regards to our report card? Kate, do you want to say something real quick?
It's more of, it's more of a comment. I mean, all of this is based on the ACT.
SAT.
SAT, one of them, I don't know. I know it's mandated now.
Yes.
But I can tell you from talking to former students who had no desire to go to college and did not want to take the test they were forced to take. There was a lot of ABCD, 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 and that's going to skew the scores. And I think this is a problem. I know we got to test on something. But the kid who's going to go into the trades and could care less about their SAT, ACT, you're going to make me take this test? ABCD, 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 have a nice day, I took the test. So I don't think we're truly getting a true snapshot. And I know we got to test on something, but I don't think it's fair. You have a college that's going to be 50% trades and 50% college versus a high school that's going to be 80% college and 20% trades. They're going to take the test a hell of a lot more seriously because it matters to them. The 50% of our students, 60%, 30%, what's the year? That's going to skew our scores every single time. And I know we got to test on something, but I think we need to take all of that with a little bit of a grain of salt. Because I've talked to quite a few former students who had no desire to go to college and it's a waste of three hours. I made designs, I went ABCD, I didn't apply myself at all. And that, that, that's going to be reflected in the scores. And that's, I've heard that from more than one student. I'm not going, I don't care, I'm blowing it off.
You're absolutely right. We do everything that we can to try to talk to kids about why it's important.
I get it.
The other thing that we're excited about is coming soon, college and career is going to be factored into this, which we know that we are ahead of the curve on so much of that. So I think, you know, it's, it's going to be a smaller percentage, but that's going to help us.
Oh, no, absolutely.
So you're absolutely right.
And then we got to take it with a grain of salt. I mean, we really do, because if a majority of our students aren't going and it's a waste of time to them. No matter how much we encourage them, it's like, I just want to get this done and get the hell out of here and move on to the next stage. I already got my apprenticeship, I could care less, good luck.
The other thing we have to remember is that over 50% of our students are not native English speakers and they're taking a test that is, and not to say that our students aren't incredibly proficient in English, but that test is, there's a lot of things on there that academic language, that might be a real challenge to even students, even English speakers, right? So I think when you look at a school with our population, we really are at a disadvantage in a couple of different ways. So I think you're right, and seeing the gains that we're making with the changes in our population, that's a real tribute to our students, our teachers and our community.
No, I, I'm not upset with our report card at all, but you look at what the scores are based on, you look at a percent, I, I, I would have been an ABCD guy because it didn't matter to me. I just want to get out of this class and move on. I've already got my enlistment paper signed, have a nice day, this means nothing to me. So why should I apply myself? And I think our scores reflect that. We have a lot of kids going into the trades, going into jobs, going into the military. They can care less, they just, you're making me take this test, the hell with you.
And just, just to highlight Kate's point, we did a further data dive just administratively and 0% of our existing EL students were proficient in math or ELA. And it's, that, obviously, now we're looking at probably 30%. So I appreciate your comments, John, because we don't, we don't look at test scores as a way of how effective the school is. And I think, and honestly, I just sat in one of the, in EL class, there's tremendous learning going on in that class, but it's not SAT, college career readiness benchmark type, type material, so.
Exactly what you're saying, Sam. You look back at the one slide of former English learner students, how well we're doing there. I think that speaks higher than anything else because once the kids become proficient, their improvement and their drive is tremendous. We're, we're almost in the top 10% there when you look at that slide. I think that says a lot too, but it's not, it's only a small portion of the whole big score. So I, I think we got to not get hung up on this. I think we're making the right improvements and until they find a better way to do this, you refer us to me to take a test that means nothing to me. I'm making designs, I'm getting out of this class as fast as I can, have a nice day, I don't care about your school report card, I'm graduating.
Yep.
So our improvement or you guys moved toward addressing the career advancement and then the also pathways, but also the, hopefully the company improvement, our CTE would definitely help reaching all students.
Yeah, and we're, I mean, even agreeing with what John said, one of the things that I think is good is if you remember back to the beginning of the year, our focus was on EL strategies for all and our focus was on accountability with attendance. So we actually knew this, like we knew, just being with our students and talking to our teachers, we knew that these are problems that we need to continue to make better and to bolster, give our staff the strategies in order to do this, make sure we have the structures in place. So, you know, although some of these scores aren't exactly where we want them to be, as an administrative team, we looked at this and we were like, we're on track. We know that next year, we are, who knows with, if the needle will actually move, but we're doing, we predicted what was happening there. So, and that's why it's helpful to look at what Blackhawk and Wooddale are dealing with, that helps us to be able to predict. And we're doing a lot of great work of meeting with their teachers, with their administrators to make sure that we understand what they're doing so that we can, you know, build partnerships there. Because what they're experiencing is what we're going to experience next year and the year after that and the year after that.
And you've already implemented some summer programming to help the incoming students for some of those maybe shortfalls.
Yeah.
I don't know if shortfalls is the right word, but.
There were no surprises on this report card for us, yeah.
Yeah.
Because there was also an intent to reach beyond just the incoming students, but also the, well, the middle school also.
Yep, absolutely.
So we'll keep pushing ahead with that and we also have a special guest here as well, Michelle Papa-Nicolaou, you know her very well, to talk about, which will be part of the report card in the upcoming years, is college and career pathways.
I have some materials. I joked with Ms. Lem, our graphic arts teacher, that I'm going to become a graphic designer after this year.
Is this the Cliff Noe version?
So that's why I have it all in a folder for you so I don't have to talk about everything. Because you know I can talk about the clothing.
I need the career guide.
It's nice to see all of you. Reid, it's nice to meet you. I'm Michelle Papa-Nicolaou, I'm the Director of Post-Secondary Pathways. I'm also the Division Leader for Career and Technical Education and I am grateful for you to have me here tonight to talk about all the wonderful things, college and career readiness that we're doing here at Fenton. I am grateful to have a team around this work. This year, we've assembled alongside of our Assistant Principal, Eric Karanda, our College and Career Counselor, Rachel George-Akis, Maya Whalen, one of our school counselors, and Claudia Leclerc, she's our new College and Career Administrative Assistant. Oftentimes Lauren Lem will join us as our Internship Coordinator and Sam Benson is always supportive of our work. So I am going to take you briefly through each of these five areas and then if you have any questions, you can go ahead and ask me, but you know I can talk about this all day, so I'll try and keep it brief. So the first thing I'm going to talk to you about today is the PACE framework. This came out of House Bill 3296. It is now in law as of last May that every school district, grades six through 12, have to have a framework in place and published on their website by July of 2025. The three major areas of this framework include career, post-secondary education, including college, and financial literacy and aid. When we are finished, I don't know why the, this slide kept doing this, but let me take you through, I've changed it multiple times. But ultimately, what will happen is we will know what a student will do to prepare for college and career every year of their high school education. We'll outline what they need to know and what they need to prepare for. We are working with our feeder schools in this initiative, so we're very grateful that by the end of this, we will have something that's aligned between Wooddale, Bensonville, and we will have something that's aligned between Wooddale, Bensonville, and Fenton for what our students will do from the time they enter sixth grade to the time they graduate in this area. We're also including the College of Duke Page in our efforts, and some of our alumni, so we can get the insight that we need for what students need beyond high school. This is a state example that's on your slide here, and what we will be doing with this is we will be customizing it for Fenton and for our community. You are allowed to adopt the state example, but we figured that it's probably best that we customize it for our own purposes. All right, it's a little out of order, but that's okay. Another thing that we're putting a heavy focus on right now is part of our beliefs, that we engage students in authentic life experiences. We are trying to grow our internship and workplace learning experiences for our students. Right now, our students that are involved in internship talk about it to us with a lot of positivity. What they're telling us they love about it, we had a little focus group with them, and they're telling us they love it because it helps them narrow down their college majors and mitigate risk of high cost tuition. They can figure out if what they really think they want to do and what they want to study in college is actually what they want to do, and they have an experience to solidify those career goals. In our internship program, they also can build a professional network sooner. So when they do finish college and they want to go into a career choice, they already know some people in that field. Because depending on what their own personal or family networks include, it might not include people in that field. And we all know that to get the jobs that we want, sometimes we need to know people. So we are trying to create those connections for our students sooner. Students love the higher level of independence that they get. They've lived on a bell schedule for most of their life. They've been told when to walk, where to walk, when to sit, when to stand. This gives them the opportunity during their school day to actually be more independent and manage some of their own responsibilities. And finally, of course, they're getting the employability and leadership skills that will help them in their future. So just a briefing on the internship program, it is a course, it runs two to three periods of their day. Four days they're onsite at a place of business, and one day of instruction here at school where they can earn credentials and they can reflect on their professional skills. They can choose any area they're interested in, and they get regular feedback from their mentors onsite. About one-third of our students who are in internship right now are in paid internships. So they actually are making money while they're learning to be professionals. We also have courses that have embedded workplace learning in them, like our early childhood education class and our intro to education class and our automotive class. We partner with District Two and District Seven, so our students can teach or practice teaching in our elementary school classrooms two to three days a week. And Grand Subaru allows our students four full days onsite to shadow and get involved as much as they can in the automotive industry. So we are grateful for both of those partners. Another area where we think students can get some really important experience and authentic experiences at the Technology Center of Duke Page. They have 18 programs there, anywhere from culinary to automotive to game design. I should have a list of them on here for you, and I can get that for you. But there's 18 programs that are geared for students who have a pretty good idea of what they want to do. And they provide the training for students so they have a leg up and they can almost walk out of there into a career or at least one step closer to any certification they might want to get. It's a great program, like I said, for students who really have a great idea of what they want to do, and they want to go right into a career.
Yes, question.
Yes, it sounded like it was coming from over there.
As we are able to make improvement to some of our, I would say, career training or CTE curriculums in places, but also with the other STEM-related work, is there flexibility with curriculum from Duke Page that as we're able to offer, I would say, more challenging courses here that they can adjust also and do, and provide another higher level class that they can take, that would progress them along?
At TCD or?
Yeah, at TCD. As we are able to provide more, they can also adjust in kind.
Yeah, they are working on it. As a member of their board, I know that they're actually working on a pretty targeted effort to review their programs, know that they're relevant, rigorous, and going to prepare students for high wage, high demand, high-growth jobs. So they are taking a look at their overall programming, just as we are. And what we're trying to do in our programming here at Fenton is ensure that we're not really duplicating what they have. We want to ensure, we do have duplicates, it's just the nature. We've had autos for a long time, we have a great program, they have autos. It's okay. When our students finish our coursework here, they can go on to TCD and be part of a very important and rigorous program. But we want to focus on things like computer science and health sciences and biomed and areas that TCD doesn't necessarily offer for our students. So we're trying to think very carefully as we add any new coursework there or here that we're going to give students as many opportunities as we can. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So as you can see with the numbers, we've been sending more and more students to TCD every year. They do offer plenty of college credit and plenty of credentialing for our students who are in their programs, so we can see a number of our students are earning those. We don't have the data for this year yet from them, but we will be getting that after the school year is finished, so we know who actually finished all of those credentialing. Another thing that we've been doing well, and I presented to you all about last year, is our college and career awareness. We have school links in place, it has really helped us. We can now provide students awareness of what's happening with college and career visits right on school links. And just, so we have an idea, about 40 colleges have already visited Fenton to talk with our students this year, and about 142 of our students have attended those. We've also continued our work on career tracks and career talks. We've had over 20 career talks this year and over five career tracks. We are doing more and more of our career talks in our courses. We know that we have students, a captive audience, they know that that's the area that they want to study or that they're exploring, but we are also bringing in other professionals outside of the coursework, because we have those seven career areas. We have certain careers that we focus on, but there's thousands of careers. So some of those that we've taken, we've brought in outside of our courses during bison time, inter-pro language services, translation services. We have a lot of multilingual students here that can be an asset to our community in that field. Aviation is another one we're working on, we've had a military fair, just to name a few. We went over to Romekstera this year for a great career track. And our health sciences teachers have brought in numerous guest speakers this year as part of their course. So it's, everyone's doing a lot of work to that end. Okay, this is another mandate, is our Illinois State Board of Education College and Career Pathway endorsements. It was part of my first slide, but ultimately, we have been asked to not only have pathways. I've talked about the seven areas, there's literature in here about the seven areas, and we've organized all of our courses to those careers. But they've now upped it and said, we want students to have the opportunity to have an endorsement on their diploma when they graduate. And with this diploma endorsement, there might be some benefits to it, like scholarships or, in some cases, they might have a free ticket to Golden Apple Scholars of Illinois. They might have some tuition stipends from community colleges, but ultimately, there's requirements. And our first one is going to be in the area of education. And what has to happen is each student has to, one, have an individualized plan, and this plan has to include career goals, resumes, things of that nature. There needs to be professional learning. So a student to get this endorsement will have to have participated in at least two career exploration activities, two team-based challenges, that means they've done a project where mentors from the field have helped them or posed a problem to them, and they will need 60 cumulative hours of internship. Third, they will need a career-focused instruction, so they will have to take the courses that go along with the area they're trying to get the endorsement for. Within those courses, two of them, for a total of six credit hours, will have to be dual credit or early college credit. And then finally, they will have to be ready for non-remedial coursework in reading and math. That's what Kate was kind of alluding to earlier. They're going to have to either have a great GPA or at least a 2.8 in COD's definition for some of their remedial benchmarks or an SAT score of a certain amount. So what we've done with the education and training endorsement is we've built all of that into our courses. They don't have to do anything, if they sign up for our courses, it's all part of it. We won't be able to do that in every endorsement area, but in as many as we can, that's what we're trying to do. You sign up for the classes, we're going to get you everything you need. So this year is our first one that we've launched for the class of 2027 for education and training. Next year, we'll be looking to add finance and business services along with computer information technology. And then the following year, we'll be ready to launch health sciences and engineering and manufacturing. The last topic I'd like to talk about is our early college credit, particularly our dual credit. There are three ways our students can earn college credit while still in high school. One of them is through advanced placement, as long as they earn a certain score once they take the exam. Second one is dual credit, that's where our teachers have to get credentialed, and they can teach the college course to our students, and the students earn the credit. And the last one is dual enrollment, where a professor from the college can teach our students, sometimes onsite, sometimes here at Fenton. We don't do that here at Fenton, our students in dual enrollment go onsite. Right now, we have dual enrollment with Elmhurst for Calc III. But we're trying to grow the dual credit. So last year, we had one course, and we had about 50 students in those courses. And earning about 150 college credits, you can see on the bottom row about how much money that they saved as a cumulative group. This year, we have five classes, and we have about 114 students enrolled. And if they all pass and do a great job and earn that credit, they will have accumulated over $200,000 in college credit tuition. And finally, next year, we're looking to grow it at least by three courses. We already have at least three courses lined up with COD ready, they've approved, pre-approved our teachers with their credentials. We just have to get it in the books, and we'll hopefully be up to 400 students earning dual credit here at Fenton. Okay, those are my areas. Sorry, I know I went a little longer, James, I always do, I apologize. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Michelle, great job. Next up is our Transition Learning Center. Rich couldn't make it today, so he made a video. I asked him to make this video because this is a very important program. It is part of our special ed program and for students that have graduated from Fenton with significant disability. As we all know, there's, the law is that we have to educate our students with disability up to 22 years of age if they desire. So let's take it away, Jim.
Good evening. My name is Richard Watts, and I'm the Special Education Director from Fenton High School. I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit more about the Transition Learning Center. It's run by our North Duke Page Special Education Cooperative to help our students that are transitioning between high school and adulthood. The TLC vision statement is to develop, nurture, and establish students as young adult learners in a collaborative, community-based program that supports and enhances students' independence and promotes adulthood success in the areas of employment, post-secondary education and training, independent living, and the community. To meet the needs of our young adults, the Transition Learning Center staff works as a team to provide a continuum of services and programs and training to support young adult learners at all levels of functioning to maximize student success. Our enrollment for TLC, which is a combination of students from Fenton High School and Lake Park, is currently at 20 students. Four of those require direct one-on-one adult support. In '24, '25, this number will grow to 24 students, six of whom will need the direct one-on-one adult support. In '25, '26, and '26, '27, we expect 29 students, eight of them will have a need for one-on-one adult support. The question now is why, why TLC? Why do we do this? Under federal law, students with special needs who have an IEP, or Individualized Education Program, are entitled to receive special education services up until the date of their 22nd birthday. In 2021, Illinois increased this age limit so that students can finish the school year during which they turn 22. Given this legal change, students no longer had to abruptly end services mid-year. This allowed for families and more celebrations as students stayed in school for the entire year. They have, at the end of the year, resolution celebration for graduation from the program. TLC classroom learning, we focus on functional academics as well as functional life skills. And the academics, it's reading, math, social science, and social skills, daily living groups, recreation and leisure, focusing on preparation for independent living, topics and materials that are age-appropriate but relevant to the needs and development of our students. And we also keep a familiar curriculum, so very similar from high school, the upper-level high school, junior, senior year, to TLC, following that same curriculum. In functional life skills, we work on total communication, including body language and speech, cooking, cleaning tasks, hygiene, independent use of technology, appropriate social skills, and then self-advocacy skills, so that students can reach out and ask for what they need and make sure that they are successful. TLC has three classrooms that I'll walk you through. Our first classroom is on the left, they share space with our related service officials in the back space, you see behind the divider. And then Classroom Two is on the right side. The third classroom shares with, shares our space with the building entrance and all central building activities. Note the spacing needs here. Keep in mind that many of our students utilize occupational and physical therapy devices like wheelchairs, standards, braces, gate trainers, et cetera. One of our goals is making sure we have a connection between the community and the classroom. To do this, we have, we focus on daily schedule planning, researching, community transportation, grocery store, cooking preparation, budgeting, communication or self-advocacy skills, counting, making change, researching jobs in the community, practicing job applications, writing resumes, community planning, and then helping students understand their paychecks and what they look like and what they mean. We also work on train and bus transportation opportunities, making sure our students can get from point A to point B, and we actually have field trips and practice to make sure that happens. Independent grocery shopping, asking for help when needed, making independent purchases, community safety, appropriate social skills, and then employability skills through paid and unpaid employment opportunities. On the left is our multipurpose room, where students work on social and vocational skills. On the right, you see some of our students in our lockers, and that's also where we have, our students have lunch. Speaking of lunch, this is our kitchenette, where all the student lunches are prepared, and also where independent living lessons are taught to our students. This area does not currently have a stove. We have lessons that use microwave and other open preparation areas, but currently no lessons regarding stoves. We don't have space or exhaust for one. Proceeding now to the restroom areas, we currently have one women's bathroom, one men's bathroom with two stalls. These are all ADA compliant, but as you can see, the size challenges our students and staff face. And then on the far right is our staff bathroom, which students cannot use because there's an exit door, and for our students, that would be an elopement risk, there would be a concern they might leave the building. Here we have examples of students that are completing the Chamber of Commerce job. We have a number of students that utilize occupational and physical therapy support items, like a standard. And we have a laundry area, which also we utilize for storage at TLC. Storage for items that the TLC school is using. Students practice cleaning and vocational tasks each day to prepare them for future living and job opportunities. We have some photos here of our students doing that. We have an indoor walking track due to space restraints. You see our students are walking through open areas and new classrooms, but also getting their exercise. We have recreational time where students can work on social skills. Here's an example of the laundry area again, and our computer workspace for students. And cooking activity in the multipurpose room, where they can prepare foods. And then we have art therapies and music therapies, and this is an example of art therapy in the lunchroom. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Just really, I ask Rich to take pictures and videos of the TLC site. Our contract for the TLC Center, which is in downtown Bensonville, is up this June. We need to move for a couple of reasons. As you can see in the pictures, it's overcrowded. Our students are packed there into sardines. The enrollment will increase to 30 to 29 with 10 101 adults to assist our students with severe disability. We also had some issues with this site. If you have seen the site, if you haven't seen the site, and would like to see that with me or Morden, welcome. It's basically an apartment complex, and we had issues where plumbing and the ceiling escaped in, where we had to shut down schools, electrical and other space issues there. I think the pictures, what I tried to tell Rich is, really show the pictures so the board could see the crampedness and the lack of space is for students that need more space, that need more services, and the most neediest as well. So as he stated earlier, we share this building with Lake Park High School to cover the costs. Both the superintendent and I agreed that we cannot return there next year, and has directed Todd Putnam, who was here a couple of months ago, to start looking for a place for us to relocate. Once again, that's just way too small right now. The square footage is 5,600 square feet with approximately 30 individuals, including adults, 20 students, and about 10 adults there. That will grow to approximately 50. We need a space of approximately 10,000 square feet, and we are looking for that. We have so far, we have toured four sites. That includes the superintendent's administrators. We invited parents of our students to also take a look at these four sites and NetSec staff. And there is a promising site here in Bensonville. We would like to stay organic, to stay in town. We don't want to go all the way to Addison or another site. I think our parents and our students deserve to be close to their homes. So therefore, we'll continue to look for them, and I'll keep you updated. As the numbers grow, as the square feet increases, as you know, the cost will continue to go up. But once again, I just want to reiterate to give you that visual. That is not an efficient or appropriate place for us as our enrollment moves forward. Even if our enrollment stayed the same, it would still not be the best place. Any questions? There are some for warning you, that will come up, and we will have a proposal to move to a new site, and we will provide you with that pricing. Reed?
Well, there's, I'm working from memory here. There's like 23 or 4 people there now. And, you know, how many of those folks does Fenton have responsibility for?
In '23, '24, we will have 22 Fenton students there. We have the majority of students there now. Right now, there's 20, I believe 17 are ours.
Okay, and then you outsource them to this place because they handle their needs, apparently. So because I'm trying to, if this is an outsourced arrangement, but Fenton still gets drawn into helping them find a new place even though they're an independent organization?
These are Fenton students.
I'm assuming you pay a tuition or something?
Yes, we do. I know it's a NetSec program, yes.
Yeah. So that if they're already paying a tuition, they can't find their own place?
Before you carry on, John, I mean, James, could you explain that these are the facilities provided by NetSec, which we pay or?
Correct.
Right.
Could you?
Sure, sure. So NetSec is the provider. As you know, it's the North DuPage Special Ed Co-op. They provide these services to save us money in so many ways. They have also the staff in this specialty to service these students with severe disability.
Right, and this is the same functionality?
Correct.
Right.
So therefore, there is a tuition that they do charge per student.
Right.
Which includes the facilities where these students attend.
All right, all right. I'm just, I'm not going to ask any more. I just couldn't figure out why, if they're an independent organization, we're paying tuition, but you're still drawn into helping them find a new place and some other stuff?
Sure, because I think, Reed, as an advocate for our students, I think it's our job, administrators, especially, especially the superintendent, to make sure our students are housed well, are served well, and in a safe and secure place. And our parents were also invited, and they had input. No, we don't like this place because I would not put my kids here.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I think that was critical, that we have not just NetSec staff, but parents as well as students and the administrators of the school districts.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
The TLC program is a subset of NetSec.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, I was a little confused too. So this is a subset of NetSec.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to say.
This is where, because I'm trying to process this too, because I've heard of NetSec, but this is really the first time I'm hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
In my time, we discussed the TLC Center. So this is where I was a little confused as well.
Actually, we talked about before that it was the Transition Learning Center. That's what I mentioned.
Yeah, but I don't think I put the two together.
Okay.
As one being a subset of the other. This is where I think I was somewhat confused too. Because I was, I don't know, maybe I missed something?
This is all NetSec in the end result.
This is all NetSec.
There is a continued education for the state of Illinois that is, that has got to be graduated after.
Well, I get that NetSec goes to 22, and I didn't realize that we transitioned into the TLC. I think I lost a piece somewhere in translation, because I always remember discussing NetSec. I hear TLC brought up, but in my mind, I was thinking of our classrooms, not realizing it was an off-site facility. So the fact that they need to find a new facility, that cost, since they're revenue-neutral, comes back to all the schools that participate.
That's correct.
So we are going to see an increase in the cost of the NetSec because of the move to the TLC, because we had the increase in the students and the increase of the one-on-one.
Absolutely.
So this really isn't our direct cost, it's their direct cost, but their direct cost trickles down to us based on the number of students we're.
Absolutely.
Okay, now it makes, because I got even, I was a little confused here, so now it makes more sense. Thank you.
So that's a great clarification. Also, one more program, as you know, we do have NetSec in the building. It's called Life Skills.
See, that's where I think I got confused. I think I was confusing Life Skills with the TLC, not realizing. So I think this is where I lost something in translation.
But the connection is, the Life Skills program, over time, typically flows into TLC.
Right, yeah, I get it.
It's almost like looking at elementary district enrollments and seeing where are we going to be?
Now it makes more sense, because I think that's where I got lost, because I'm thinking of our rooms here. I didn't realize we had the off-site facility. I don't know why I didn't put it together, why I didn't piece it together, but now it makes more sense. So that helps a lot. Okay, thank you.
I heard a confusion, and I was trying to lead them to where it was going.
Yeah, all right. No, I'm with him.
I got to admit, I was a little confused too. And I think I was thinking our classrooms was that, but it's not. Now it makes more sense. I get it, so this is the next step.
It's a part of it.
It's all tied together. I get it, it's all under the NetSec umbrella.
10,000 square feet we can rent to them?
We do not.
I mean, now that all that's settled out.
The STEM wing is for STEM.
No, no, because I got to admit, even I was a little confused. Now it makes more sense to me. Now the pieces fell into place.
Yeah, it's what we said, you go to downtown, you can see it where Joey C's used to be.
Yep, where Joey C's, yeah.
Okay, 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 okay.
Right.
Yeah, okay, now it makes more sense. Now, okay, thank you.
Some more to come. Thank you for that. We got a couple more items here. Just real quickly, stadium update. All is going well. As you guys know, we had a finance facility meeting earlier at 6:00 PM. Real quick, stadium is moving along. Grass has been removed here. If you could go back one, Jim. Basically, the before and after picture there, working on the turf, working on the track, and working on the paving. Next slide. Here is more of a picture of paving. We'll have brand-new paving, and we're just grateful that there's a little bit of dryness and sun this November and late October, because as you guys know, we lost at least a month of workdays due to the wet weather. Next slide. This one is the stadium update and piping. We're putting more piping to battle against our flooding issues, our water issues, and continuing to move forward our water mitigation. Next slide.
James, real quick on that, I meant to ask at the previous meeting, have we made the final tie-in to the village now?
Yes, we have.
Because I know we talked about tying the front into the system, but I couldn't remember if I heard we tied in and made that final village connection. So now the whole system, in theory, should be flowing properly.
As a recap, the front has been tied to the main stormwater.
Right.
And the main stormwater. Yep, and the main stormwater has been tied to the city.
So we did make the city tight. That was, I remember, a meeting or two meetings ago, we were still waiting to make that tie-in. So good, thank you.
Next up is the real quick restroom. We are going to wait, because we had a bidding for the restroom construction. It's cost a little too much, so we will wait until the STEM Wing project starts in regards to that to save money. STEM Wing update. Once again, there's five phases for the architectural design phases. Phase one is a real, super-high view of design, big pictures, collaboration with our architects as well as our finance. Phase two is more schematic. That's also a little bit grand pictures, brainstorming with the administrators. Phase three, design and development, that's more of the classroom level, where we brought in teachers and staff for their input. And we're very, very close to the next phase, which is the construction documentation phase, which we will work with engineers, mechanicals, and civil, and really get to the nitty-gritty. And afterwards, it's actual construction phase. And here are some renderings of, nope, I guess we don't have renderings of the STEM Wing. Real quick, we received one FOIA from Proven IT. Proven IT is a technology company that rents and sells technology. They wanted more information about our copiers. That has been resolved. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Our next item is consent agenda. Would any of our board members like to remove any items from the consent agenda and vote on them separately?
Yes. P cards.
Okay, the board will vote on P card report separately. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented excluding the P card report?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Razinsky?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, just real quick, we had a very special guest here. We're very, very excited to hire our next CSBO, Mr. Eric Grossi. Eric, why don't you step up here and shake our hands here? Let's give my hand. We just formally approve. This is Julia Rago, personal president.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, how are you? Good morning.
Nice to meet you.
All right, let's give my another hand here. Eric, why don't you take the mic, say a couple of words, a little background, your experience, and why you chose Fenton?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for inviting me to the board meeting today. I'm really honored to be here today in front of all of you guys. I'm in the school district. Everything that I've read, everything that I've seen about the district has been awesome. There's a lot of exciting things to look forward to in the future. You know, this board meeting today, saw some pictures, that's my construction, that's always very exciting. Overall, you know, I'm very excited to become a Bison. I'm Eric Grossi. As James said, I'm from Chicago Heights, Illinois originally. I currently live in the city with my girlfriend Nicole over there. And I'm currently working as the business manager at Evergreen Park, School District 124, which is elementary school over there. It's been a good three years over there, but you know, I'm really ready to start a new chapter over here. Thank you to everyone, and I'm really looking forward to July 1st.
Bruce, your day's numbered.
I thought the start date was April 1st.
No, July. He's got an out and out, and I can ask you to stay another year.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the P card report as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
You know, why is it there is such anonymity in some of these expenses, such as in travel? Number one is ordering everything from science to piano guides, you know, to Hispanic Heritage event supplies. I mean, seems to me there should be some ownership of these things. It helps, you know, give an impression that, otherwise, this looks like it's, puts a bad light on internal controls when somebody can spend this kind of money and not having to be personally responsible.
Mr., for going forward, it would be, we could continue, try to follow the protocols in place. Whatever questions these board members may have, we have from Friday to Wednesday, was it? Tuesday? Tuesday afternoon to provide whatever questions we may have to, directly to the superintendent. And all of these can be hashed out in detail. It's kind of hard to really address some on-the-spot like this without some digging.
I understand.
And that would give them a chance to give a fair response and reasonable response to whatever inquiries we may have. So it's nothing against a discussion, but some of these, it's not really reasonable or fair to, on-the-spot have to go through specific items to address.
I would just add, it's a high-level summary report. We have all the backup here, the controls, the sign-offs, all that. If we wanted to include that in the board packet, it would basically be a phone book every month. So we can certainly pull that if the board wishes to have all those receipts to back up all those purchases, we can certainly do that. But that information is held in the business office monthly. It's reviewed by multiple people within the office and outside the office, so that there is checks and balances for these purchases that are occurring.
Everything is documented, and to be fair for the business department, and just to reiterate and pick it back from what Carrie is saying, the board has basically from Friday all the way to Tuesday afternoon. Please, if there is a specific question or would like to view documentation, and we could provide to that information, Reed, but once again, to reiterate and put Bruce on the spot and say, hey, look, why is this, what is this? to reiterate and put Bruce on the spot and say, hey, look, why is this, what is this Latino heritage receipt all about? He can't pull that right away. But it doesn't mean we're avoiding to answer the question. I think it's just a matter of time and time to explain and time for research.
Basically, all these purchases are budgeted items and they're approved in our overall budget?
They are, yes.
Okay, thank you. That was my only follow-on question to that, and I assume that's how we were operating, but just for verification. Okay, so thank you.
Appreciate the added detail for the building and stormwater-related items. They were a bit, they didn't stand out enough in past reports, but I have noticed that there's more detail in those entries for those construction-related items that we have on there. Help us, help, leave them stand out for us better, right?
Yeah, I'm good.
Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodridge?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Discussion item, acceptance of the 2023 estimated tax lenient. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need a further discussion for, since this was covered during finance? John says no. Any questions in regards to tax levies?
I don't have any.
Any further? No. Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodridge?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. May I have a motion for the next, for the shared service report?
I'll make a motion to accept the shared service report.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Did I hear earlier that this is something that we're required to do?
It's required as part of the AFR, and it's an annual perfunctory process, basically, that the board acts on, you know, to demonstrate to the community that we're showing fiscal efficiency with other entities for outsourcing and shared services.
All right. Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodridge?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Committee reports. Venceville Community Foundation?
They had a meeting on the 9th, I believe it was. Neither Kent or I were able to attend. That was James Burke's retirement. I was tied up with that, and Kent had a family commitment, so I haven't seen the notes on that. So really, we have nothing to report beyond what was reported previously, if that makes sense.
Board DEI committee?
We had nothing to report. We're gonna find on Friday to see where we can find some information and share with you guys.
Thank you. Board Finance Facilities Committee?
Mr. President, I think we've beat this up enough in the last couple of meetings.
He wanna recap.
I really would rather not. Things are getting done, things need to be done, and I'm sure we'll have another meeting on this next month. Sorry, just being honest.
Board Policy Committee?
Nothing.
ISB, we've, at the last meeting, I requested your input on the policy item to be voted upon this weekend at the triple-I conference. If you could give me your responses, that would be great.
Yeah, I talked to James about that earlier.
And look forward to your attendance this weekend at the conference.
Friday morning.
Friday and early Friday morning.
When is your delegate meeting?
Saturday at noon.
Saturday at noon, okay.
You can email.
I'll get it to you later.
Len?
Just three Senate bills, one Senate bill in regards to, that's, that might be voted on by the Assembly in Springfield. It's in regards to halal kosher food sponsored by Vilam and Senator Aliq. Also, House bill in regards to water safety, and another House bill in regards to ISB language cleanup. So more to come on that, but that's what's being legislated in regards to schools.
That's it?
I wasn't able to attend, but I believe Mr. James was there.
Yes. We had a meeting last Monday. We spoke about TLC and looking for different locations, and we also are anticipating another negotiations with one of their union associations.
Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, December 20th, 2023, at 7:00 PM with a tentative Finance Facilities Committee meeting scheduled prior to the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Also a reminder, as I stated a second ago, triple-I conference starts Friday, this Friday. Nice, bright, and early bus, I mean, truck van ride, you know, complimentary donuts and coffee if you show up early for the drive. May I have a motion in a second to go into closed session for the following. Five Illinois CS 120 slash 2 C1, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Fenton School District 100. Five Illinois CS 120 slash 2 C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Roll call.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Yes.
Rego?
Yep, yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodridge?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. President, I would like to recommend if we could just go to close.